Now, so the meeting is recorded and was on channel nine, according to Harley's. Chairman's addition deletions, I don't think we have any. Jim, correct me.
No, sir, there was a some outreach from the Board of Health and I know that Chairman Nocella is on now about wanting to have a discussion with the board about town hall and access to the public and perhaps tightening things up a bit. It's not agenda because we were already posted, but maybe under public comment. If Chris wanted to address it, he could come in.
Yeah, that's it. That's, that's fine. So let's just move to public comment and Chris fire away. He's muted.
It's public is.
You're muted, Chris. Okay, yeah, we, I didn't know we were up there already. I didn't hear. The additions to learnings or any of that stuff. So I'm just reading off your agenda. One thing, one thing I wanted to discuss was that writing your opening letter that says it was updated on January nineteen, two thousand and twenty one. It says the ballot selection closed town offices, including boards, committee meetings, consists with governor's orders and public access to promote social distancing and reduce spread of COVID nineteen. So why is the town hall open for the citizens to come into the town hall?
Want to take that one?
Yep. I think that's each step of the way when the board has made public comment on this stuff and the documents, the website. Idea was not have public meetings where you'd have people congregating where social distancing might be difficult. But instead to try to strike balance between being protective. But also some access to the government. So what they voted to do is actually move forward and have the intercom, the two-way audio and video intercom system installed. So the doors are locked. Your business, you buzz in and the office you're looking to go to doesn't already have somebody in it. That puts it over the twenty-five percent floor mark from the government's orders. You buzzed and then allowed to come do your business and then you leave. That the, the concern might be that people are mulling about and, and congregating in the halls. I did I personally not experienced that. I've asked some folks downstairs if they've experienced it and indicates that when the people are done their business, they're in just as much a rush to get out as, as you might want them to be. So I've asked people if they see people congregating to let me know. So I buzz down the stairs and, and make stuff to get it addressed. Situation to trying to balance the health and safety of the employees against the right for the people to access their government to do their work. Perhaps a suggestion that when people buzz in that the office they're buzzing, go out and meet them at the door and walk them in and then walk them back. Looked at as a trial balloon with some folk in the building and people a thousand minutes per kill.
Jim, not to interrupt, but with Chris background, you're coming in like every other word.
Hey, you're not coming through clear, Jim.
You need to mute yourself, Chris.
Is this better?
Yep, much.
Okay, so everything I just said. I'm gonna try it again.
Say it again.
Okay. The, the board has taken a, a series of votes over the course of the last almost year in terms of how to handle balancing the protection of folks when considering COVID and also having people have access to their government. So what you've seen is a full-scale closure of the town hall where there was no access and only people that were deemed essential were showing up to the building and doing work. And then there was a loosening of that and the board voted to use COVID funds to have the, the intercom and video system installed such that the doors are locked and now there is access for citizens to come be able to do business in town hall, but only by buzzing into the office. They're seen in the office via the video and they're able to speak back and forth. If somebody's coming to pay their taxes, the collector's office will ask, you know, how can we help you? They'll say, I'd like to pay my taxes to the extent that there are fewer people in the office than twenty-five percent of the usual floor space would allow. And there's a sheet, a sheet online that dictates what those numbers are for our offices. That person will be buzzed in. They come in, they pay their bill and they go out. I know that I'm repeating myself again, but when Chris and I spoke and I, Carla and I spoke on the tail end of last week, there was a concern that some folks might be milling around in the hallways. What I'd said a moment ago is I've not seen that, but then again, I'm upstairs where there's not as much foot traffic. So I did speak with folks downstairs and they, no one was able to say to me that they, they saw that as a concern. Part of the suggestion coming back from Carla, which I believe was a discussion at the Board of Health meeting would be if somebody comes to the door and they buzz the collector's office as an example, that the collector have an employee walk to the door, escort them in and then after they do their business, escort them back out. To one of the folks I spoke with downstairs, it was, they're thinking that this is overkill for an issue that they're not certain exists. And it really takes them off task from doing their work to have to be away as much as they, they would be doing in that case.
Okay, I can't. Majority vote that they voted to implement this. The reason that we've checked with other towns and the Michelle Board of Health to see what other towns are doing. And this seems to be short of closing the town hall completely. This is probably the safest way it can be handled.
I had Rick Metcalf come see me Friday morning, our representative on the show of Associated Board of Health. And he, he didn't say that. He said that it was purely within the discretion of the Board of Health to determine, but he, he wasn't advocating one way or another that we either change what we've got going or not. Again, it's, it's something that coming as a driver from the Board of Health.
Board of Health and Rick Metcalf, Rick Metcalf offers us suggestions. He doesn't tell us what to do. He doesn't make the rules. That's our job. This is what the board came up with and we think is the best solution for all of the employees in town hall. Now, you obviously, the board of selectmen don't go to the town hall. You don't meet, so you feel safe. I hear from other people in the, give me a second, Ronnie. That they don't feel comfortable with the people walking the halls. I, I can't speak for everyone. I haven't talked to the accountant on the back thing or anything like that, but you know, the section that we're in the town hall, they see everybody in and milling around. So I, it's gonna be your call, you guys, but that's the majority Board of Health recommends that. Go ahead, Ronnie.
Well, you said that the Board of Selectmen does not go to town hall. That is not exactly accurate. We, we have attended meetings at town hall socially distanced and masked. And I know I was in there today picking up my packet. We go in there once a week to sign the warrant. So we do go into town hall and I personally have not seen people milling about. So I'm not, I, I have seen people buzz in. I don't let people in when I get there, but they do buzz in. And I assume that if departments are overrun with people, they wouldn't let someone in until they were getting rid of the person in front of them, but I don't monitor that.
And I, and I can agree. I've, I've never seen more than one person in any of the offices or, or milling about in the hallways. All the doors are closed at all times. So I, I think this, again, I think this is the safest way to, to, to move forward. I don't, I'm not a big fan of escorting in and out. Just because that's more exposure.
Well, then today. Nobody down there at all. So I I was in that building this morning to deal with the town clerk and I didn't see anybody milling around the bottom floor. As I was leaving, a couple of people, one at a time buzzed in. So I didn't see any kind of a lot of people there.
I, I will say that I, I had a concern about people going in and out and I had requested that we have someone doing temperature checks or something, asking the questions similar to how they were doing it at the senior center. And I was told that that was unnecessary and that, and it was in a meeting. I don't know who told me that. I can't remember. But that employees would self-monitor and that that would be fine. I, it might have been the Board of Health that said that. So I honestly don't know. It was a while back though.
What, what else is just?
Was that in the previous administration? It wasn't in line and I can promise you that. Question is, is I have for the public selectmen is who's the liaison to the Board of Health now? That the other guy quit.
I think that might be me.
Okay. I would like you to call it in more meetings then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be discussing giving up after the election on Saturday. So.
Yeah, that's another question I have for you is why the last time when the girl quit that we waited six months to have an election and this time we had to have it right away. No, no offense to anyone running and, but I'm just curious, why were costing the town more money?
It was just, it was discussed at a previously recorded meeting that, you know, operating as a two-person board is because I'd spend the better part of my, my tenure with a two-person board and it's very inefficient and difficult to get things done. So we made a decision as a board to move forward with the election as is.
Okay, that's fine. All right. So I, I've done my part as the chairman of the Board of Health and told you what we think and what we recommend. It is your call. And if God forbid, something happened, it's on you guys. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, Wayne, I've got something, please. Joan Savoy. I'd like to say that I can't remember a time when we had a town meeting or an election in town when the date wasn't posted on the front page of the website. And we have an election on Saturday and the date of the election is not on the front page of the website. There's a link that gets you to the date, but I think it's unusual and slightly upsetting. So that's my comment about that. I did call Kathy and ask her to put the date on there, but it didn't get on. And the other thing I have is a point of order, please. Wayne, I believe, I don't know if you're going to report as a liaison for the Affordable Housing Trust tonight, but my understanding is you're a trustee of the Affordable Housing Trust, not a liaison. So I think if you were going to be reporting, we would have had to have talked as a board.
Yeah, I, I have, I have no intention of reporting because we haven't met since that month ago right now. So that's not in my intention tonight.
Can I say something about that? We have, we have liaisons to elected boards and appointed boards and all of that. But so we do have a housing authority liaison and, and that would be me. With things like the Housing Trust and TCAM, for example, we don't have liaisons. And I don't know whether that's something that we want to have, but that's certainly because they are separate organizations, related but separate from the town. So that might be something we want to discuss at some future time, Wayne.
Okay.
But it isn't, yeah, there are no liaisons as such. So that said, I think if, if we, the Board of Selectmen are looking for a report from the Housing Trust or from the access that from TCAM, we might want to request that of the Chair of the Board. I think is what I would say in the meantime.
All right, let's move on to appointments, two point one. Can't read tonight. Uh, consideration appointment for treasure collector candidate Jared Ponti. Am I saying that right? Can I get a motion?
This says consideration of the appointment. So I, I don't see a point here. So I guess we just got the information that I requested about thirty minutes ago. And I, I think I'd like time to consider it. So can we have that, Wayne?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like a full board on this one as well. So Jim, is there a time sensitivity to this or?
Sooner than later is always better, but I wouldn't say that the house is going to burn tomorrow if you don't do it tonight. I, I would want to just be clear on the record that the information that Veronica is referencing, having just received is something she just asked for last evening. So it's not as though it's been something that's been hanging out for a while.
Well, we got our packets at six PM on Friday. It was the weekend and a holiday, and so I did not want to put in a request over that time.
I understand.
And so I waited until yesterday was Monday. It was a holiday and I put in a request for that yesterday afternoon.
Understood. I just wanted, just for the listening public to know that it wasn't something that's been outstanding. It's something that just came in.
So correct, then there was a reason for that.
Can I, can I ask a question, Wayne?
Sure, real quick.
So if, if this is the packet and it says consideration for appointment of this position. If that's going to come in front of the board, shouldn't the board, all the board have all the pertinent information about this employee? So we all know what we're even looking at?
Yeah, I mean, typically what we've done in the past is we get the application and the resume and the, the recommendation comes from the, the team that did the interviews and we discuss and consider to appoint. That's going to be the procedure going forward. The fact that Veronica wanted some additional information I didn't know about, so.
Well, no, you wouldn't know about it because I couldn't.
I know. That's what I mean.
But what we didn't have was the same information that we had for the appointment that we were going to make prior previously.
All right, well, let's, let's table this one and take it up at a future meeting, on our next one or one in between, if we have to have one. That's okay with you, Veronica?
That is fine with me, yes.
Okay, that'll give you some time to go over it. All right, then we move on. We'll move on to two point two, appoint Alice Struthers to the historic district. Can I get a motion?
I move that we appoint Alice Struthers to the Historic District Commission as an alternate member effective January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I'll second that. Any discussion here?
No, I'm assuming that she was already an alternate member and this is a reappointment. Is that true?
That's correct.
So all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Two, three, reappoint Alice Struthers to as a three news twice.
Nope, different person.
Oh, it's a Lisa as opposed to Alice.
Oh, I didn't catch that. Okay. Lisa Struthers, excuse me. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we appoint a Lisa Struthers as an alternate to the Historic District Commission for a term effective January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Now, second that. Any discussion here? I have none.
No.
All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Um, I have a question. In the last one, did I say appoint Alice as an alternate or did I say to the Historic District Commission?
To the.
I said to the, not as an alternate?
I believe you said it isn't. To the.
Okay. Most not. We would need to correct that. Okay.
So one says alternate and the other one just says to the district, but you said alternate. So I'm confused.
I say alternate both times?
No, but, well, yeah, you did use the word alternate right on the second one also.
Just to be clear, do you want to do the first one to be clear without alternate?
Yes.
Without rewinding the tape?
Um, I, I move that we appoint Alice Struthers to the Historic District Commission as an alternate member.
Both of them say alternate.
Okay, then we don't need to reappoint. I read it as written.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the second one doesn't say that.
It says as an alternate to the historic. The first one is a, as an alternate member after the fact, appoint to the, I guess that's what confused me. All right, we'll leave it as written and I hope it's correct.
All right, two point four, reappoint Kenneth. Duranian, sorry, to the historic district. Can I get a motion there?
I move that we reappoint Kenneth Duranian to the Historic District Commission for a term effective January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I'll second. Any discussion there? All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Two, five, reappoint Claire Capi to the historic district. Can I get a motion there?
Um, I move that we reappoint Claire Capi to the Historic District Commission for a term effective January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I'll second. Any discussion there? All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Two, six, appoint Steve Sheldon to the, as the Finance Committee rep to the Town Properties Committee. Can I get a motion there?
Um, I move that we appoint Steve Sheldon as the Finance Committee Representative to the Town Properties Committee effective January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second. Any discussion there? All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Meeting business, three, one, declare surplus of digital camera Kodak Easy Share S seven hundred with no value. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I move that we declare surplus, uh, digital camera Kodak Easy Share Z seven hundred. With no value. Is that what we typically say on this?
Yeah, if it's not worth anything, then it's either. I'll second that. Any discussion here? I got four cameras I gotta get rid of, so I'm declaring surplus as well. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Declare surplus furniture from the library value to be determined by the Chief Procurement Officer and the Department Head. Can I get a motion here?
That we declare surplus furniture from the library. It looks like it's a couch, a chair and a seated chair. With value to be determined by the Chief Procurement Officer and the Department Head.
I'll second. Any discussion here?
What happens to this once a value is declared to?
If there's something that has value, um, an effort's made to look online, look at eBay, look on Craigslist. Something like this furniture, you'll see the pictures in your packet, get a general sense of the value and then put a request proposals out. It first goes out to all other departments. They get first crack at it. So if any other department wants those couches, they would get them. If not, there'd be a sealed bid process that anybody that is looking at the proposal would be able to submit a bid by a time circuit and the winning bid gets it.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, do we vote?
Yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Three, three, declare surplus five to six cord of hardwood and eight to ten cord of pine. No value. Can I get a motion there? Chris, can you mute, mute, please? Thank you.
Um, I move that we declare surplus five to six cords of hardwood and eight to ten cords of pine, various lengths. But I need to know why that has no value because people pay for cords of wood.
I had the same question.
This is according to the, the letter that you have from Jim in the packet, the highway superintendent, this is limbs and debris that they collect over the course of the years. So it's not necessarily something that has, you know, it's eight inch diameter, straight length. It's a tangled mess of, of limbs and brush. What we'll end up doing with something like this is putting it out for consideration with a closed bid. And if we get some number of dollars for it, then that's considered a victory. But the bigger issue he's trying to accomplish is getting rid of it so we can have the space for the upcoming next several years because they've not gotten rid of it for a while.
And so how will he get rid of it?
Well, like I just said, we'll put a bid out saying that here's some photographs. This is what it is by this time certain. If you want it, you have to come get it. And if you put your dollar figure in there, whichever is the best price for us. If not, he's going to have to have it hauled away or have, or have a chipper brought in, but he needs to get rid of it.
I, I don't dispute that. I, I know that people drive around and pick, you know, follow the unitil trucks and pick up cordwood. Anyway, uh, yeah, I guess my question is with no value. So declare surplus five to six. I move that we declare surplus five to six cords of hardwood and eight to ten cord of pine of various lengths. With value to be determined.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Three, four, review approve an amendment to the Vadar system contract for the water department software component and authorize a town administrator to sign amendment. One fills in here.
This is something that comes from the water superintendent with the approval of the Board of Water Commissioners to do something that has been being recommended by our audience for a while now, which is create the ability for people to actually pay their water bills directly here. So there's a connection with Vadar up there in their operation with the system that will be run down here in town hall. So kudos to the superintendent for getting this taken care of.
Is there anyone from the Board of Water Commissioners on the call? Okay.
I'd like to see this get done. So yeah, so if we can get a motion to approve.
All right. I guess what I'm looking for is something that describes what Jim just said in the whereas's. So let me make the motion and then we'll discuss. I move that we approve an amendment to the Vadar system incorporated contract for the Water Department.
Authorize the town administrator to sign.
For the Water Department software component and authorize the town administrator to sign the amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. So what we have here is so it, so what you were talking about then, Jim, is under the utility billing and collection, water billing and collection in this spreadsheet. Is that correct?
The second page, yes.
Yes. And so this gives them licenses to the software themselves, the Water Department.
Correct. They don't currently have Vadar on their systems down there.
Okay, so now they will.
Correct. This will license them to be part of the same system that we operate all of our finances off of.
And this was approved by the Board of Water Commissioners?
While I can tell you I did not attend the meeting nor have I seen minutes, that is what has been presented to me by the superintendent when he brought it up. I have no reason to doubt him having said as much.
Would it have been approved by the Board of Water Commissioners?
I do not know. I don't work with the Board of Water Commissioners as their employee. I wouldn't know what their practice would be in that regard. Ultimately, it's.
I know, I know you don't work as their employee, but don't they? Anyway, all right.
Anything else, Veronica?
This proposal is valid through March 31st, correct? I guess I would have liked someone from the Water Department or the Board of Water Commissioners to be at this meeting to speak to this.
And that's, that's not how it's normally done, which doesn't mean it's not how it could be done in the future. If that's the wish of the board going forward, then a simple vote of the board saying any department proposing a contract for the board's consideration instead of just submitting documentary information should appear. But that's not how we've been doing it, at least for the five years that I've been here, Veronica. So the presumption is that as the Chief Procurement Officer, when they submit to me, I will present it to you as the go-between between all departments and the select board who are the contracting authority. So you just tell us how you want to handle it and we'll do that.
Well, Jim, with all due respect, we have had contracts signed by you and we've had the police chief on the call and he's done the explanation. If I had questions or if Wayne had questions, so I don't think it's an unusual request.
Oh, I didn't say it was unusual.
And I think moving forward, the Board of Selectmen should have input on all this.
And I'm, I would like.
It is the board's input. And again, I don't know why Mr. Shank is at this point, but I mean, this is, this is your opportunity. And if you don't feel comfortable with what's been submitted, then you pass over it and and we'll have somebody at the next meeting to address it more specifically. You just got to let us know how you want to handle it. That's all.
So I'm not disputing the fact that this is necessary. And, and the, the proposal is valid through March 31st. So we could move this to our next meeting for February, what, what is it, February 2nd?
Whatever your pleasure, just.
That's fine. I'd like, I agree. I think it should be, somebody should be invited or planning on attending. So, you know, can you revise your motion then Veronica to take no action?
I move that we take no act, I move that we take this contract up in our February 2nd meeting.
Okay, and I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 35, review sign a support letter for the Department of Fish and Game regarding the purchase of 95 acres off West Meadow, Jim?
You have information in your packets that discusses what, I understand have been a long, a long project that's been in the works. So you're dealing with, when you look at the January 12th letter from the Fish and Game Land Agent. The Mass Department of Fish and Game is considering the purchase of the interest in the land located in the town of Townsend. The letter is intended to serve as written notice of DFG's interest in acquiring the property. The property under consideration contains approximately 95 plus or minus acres of wildlife habitat. Enclosed is the locust map, track number 2021-1-9 that depicts the property in which the DFG is interested. The current use of the property is predominantly open space in its natural condition. Other portions have been used as a sand and gravel pit. If acquired, DFG, working through the Division of Fish and Wildlife, will retain the property's open space, protect and manage the wildlife resources and provide public access for passive outdoor recreation opportunities, including wildlife observation, hunting, fishing and trapping. And as payment, the DFG fee acquisition completed from January 1st to June 30th. Once acquired, DFG will pay the remaining real estate taxes on the property for that fiscal year and the full real estate tax bill on that property the following year. Number two, for DFG fee acquisitions completed from July 1st to December 30th. Once acquired, DFG will pay the remaining real estate taxes on the property for that fiscal year. And then there is a locust map that shows the parcel of land off of West Meadow Road.
This is, this is just a completion of the transaction then, basically?
It is. What they're looking for from the board is the first document in the packet that says from the Board of Selectmen, it's addressed to Christie Edwards, Director of Capital Land and Land Planning and Land Protection of the Division of Fish and Game. Greetings, Ms. Edwards. The town of Townsend is in support of Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife purchasing the parcel of land, 95 acres as recorded assessors map 514, West Meadow Road. The Board of Selectmen, any duly posted meeting held on January 19th, 2021 noted to support the acquisition of this property. We understand that if acquired, Division of Fish and Wildlife will retain the property as open space, protect and manage the wildlife resources and provide public access for passive outdoor recreation, including wildlife observations. These protections will benefit the residents of Townsend. So if it's your pleasure, they're looking for a vote to execute that letter.
Can I get a motion then Veronica?
I'll make a motion and then I want to discuss. So I move that we sign a support letter for the Department of Fish and Game regarding the purchase of 95 plus or minus acres off West Meadow Road on Assessor Map 5-1-4.
And I'll second. Discussion.
I guess my question is, is this tied with the next thing on our agenda? The mandatory referral from the Planning Board regarding 59 West Meadow Road? Are these two the same parcels?
It sounds like it to me, Ronnie.
And I, I guess I, I would like. So is there a timeframe? I'm, I'm looking at the timeframe in this letter and I see that Ann Gagnon is on this call, so she might be better able to answer this. The, the timeframe. I guess that will the work that's proposed in the, should it be permitted in the mandatory referral in 3.6? Is it at all related to the acquisition in 3.5?
It is. And my understanding, and if, if Ann has additional she can offer, was that part of the, part of the deal that's been structured between the Iodys Trust and Fish and Game is that they would be allowed to remove, once permitted, that amount of land material that is listed on the application before the ZBA. If you look at the letter that comes in, we're going ahead on the agenda. But if you look at the letter that comes in, it does reference the site containing approximately 94.6 acres. Three acres of the site is disturbed and will be reclaimed. Unsafe slopes will be degraded. One pile of sordid stone will be removed offsite from the area. The remaining piles of materials will be redistributed or left in. Approximately 150 feet of existing access, which is currently on lot one, will be relocated. So it's entirely on the property to be acquired by the Commonwealth. The site is partly in the Aqua for Protection overlay district and partly in both Res A and Res B zones. The site is further mapped as endangered species habitat under the endangered species program. The program allows work to take place before April 15th without special conditions. We look forward to discussing the project at the hearing. So it is one of the same parcel.
And I, I mean, this is, I guess, moving ahead kind of, but I don't know. I guess I just kind of want to hear what Ann has to say about this, if we could invite her to talk.
Ian, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I apologize. My video is off because I have a laptop and I was hoping to run home, but I ended up working late and so I'm still in the office with my docking station, et cetera. So I'm not really sure what the next item is on your agenda regarding mandatory referral from the Planning Board. However, I do know that the existing owners, the current owners of the property are trying to finish cleaning up the property. So there's some trash and man-made materials that need to be removed. And I believe that there are some stockpiled piles of stone and sand, loam, et cetera, that needs to be regraded. And that work will hopefully occur prior to Fish and Wildlife's purchase of the property. There are rare species on the property, so the landowners are limited as to when they can work out there. And so the current landowners are in the process of getting all their permitting in hand in order to clean up the property in anticipation of hopefully selling it to Fish and Wildlife. So I'm not sure if that answers all your questions, Ronnie.
I, I guess my question is, is the sale contingent upon the satisfactory restoration of the parcel?
Well, the sale is contingent upon cleaning up the property. So in terms of regrading and stuff like that, I'm not sure if that would be a deal breaker, but we would prefer certainly that there's compliance with all the different boards prior to our purchase.
Anything else, Veronica?
I got, I think the other one is access to the property by the public. Will there be parking spaces there somewhere that people can park and go on to the property?
Yes, that is the plan.
Okay.
Anything else, Veronica?
No, that, that's it.
All right, all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. So I think we just took care of 362 with the mandatory referral.
No, we didn't. No, the mandatory referral is comments that we have to give to the Planning Board or the ZBA.
Okay, so we'll fire away.
Thank you, by the way.
Thanks, Ann.
You're welcome. Thanks, Ann.
We have a sign out of session on that, that last vote, just to authorize you to sign the letter out of session for DFG?
All right, add to the motion to sign the letter of support that we will be signing out of session.
I'll second the amendment. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Okay, it's 36, Veronica. Do you have questions?
Well, I guess, are there any comments that we want to add? These are the Board of Selectmen comments that we'll go back to.
I didn't have any after reviewing it and it sounds like Ann answered any question I had as to what exactly was being done. Doesn't sound like a mining operation. Sounds like just a cleanup to me.
They are asking for a special permit to remove or to move from one area to the other. And I guess my, at least that's how I read this. So I, I absolutely support the, the work, you know, that the fact that it needs to be cleaned up and I, I think that, or regraded, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess I would, there's been so much done out there that I guess I would just request that it be done well. I guess that's it. And, and that if, if things are going to be done beyond our bylaw, that there'd be a good reason to do it.
Do we need a motion here, Jim, to thank?
If you have an official comment, offer back a motion so I can get it recorded as a part of the record and then send it off.
Okay. Well, I guess just what I said.
Just make a motion as stated. And I'll second. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 37, review sign certificate of appreciation for the retirement of Deputy Chief John Elliott. Does the fire chief on? I saw him in here.
Yes. Can you unmute? Chief Boynton, can you unmute? There you go.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Do you want to speak to the, the issue of the retirement of Deputy Chief John Elliott?
We recognized him last, two weeks ago at our awards night. He's retiring after, I forgot how many years, 34, I think.
It is, yep.
And he's received, when he retired from Deputy Chief a couple of years ago, or stepped down from Deputy Chief to firefighter, he received a retirement bugle, which is a fire service, a gold bugle for his years of service as a chief. And he'll be receiving or did receive last, or two weeks ago, a
froze up.
Did I go dead or did Chief Boynton?
Yeah, we lost him. Chief, are you there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You cut out.
We lost you at the end of your sentence there. We got as far as the bugle.
Okay, sorry about that. He got a retirement bugle when he stepped down from Deputy Chief a couple of years ago at our awards night. He received a plaque for his years of service with the Fire Department.
So this is just a sign of certificate of appreciation as an additional piece?
Correct.
Okay, can I get a motion, Veronica?
I move that we sign a certificate of appreciation for retired Deputy Chief John Elliott.
Out of session.
Out of session.
And I'll second that. First, thank you for your years of service. I know, John, that's a long time, so we were missed, so thank you. I don't know if you have anything to add, Veronica?
I, it would, we don't have the certificate of appreciation in front of us to read, do we? Do you have one way?
I don't, I, well, I'm going to suggest we read it at our next meeting, because I'd like, because that's typically what we've done in the past, so.
All right, so that's my only comment.
Okay.
I could do that.
All right, all those in favor?
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thanks, Chief. Discuss requests to big towns in a Purple Heart Committee. Jim, what have we got here?
Mr. Chairman, we received outreach from a gentleman who is a veteran himself and was asking that the town consider going through the process of being declared a Purple Heart Community. There's a, there's an organization that actually does this nationwide that you can apply to, and there are certain things you need to be able to certify. And if you go through that process and get the acknowledgement back, you're then allowed to purchase the Purple Heart signs that you see as you drive.
Oh, okay.
Certain communities in the Commonwealth. So we do have a note back from Joe Missola that he's looking into it. I've done this in two different communities in the past. It's, it's actually, it should be being done everywhere. So I would hope that the board will support this.
I absolutely do.
I guess I would like to hear from Joe Missola, so could we move this to our next meeting as well?
Sure, I mean, we can, do we have a letter of support that we have to create too, Jim?
There is a, it's an application on the website that is a pretty basic application, but we can...
There's a, I looked at that website, and there's a declaration that you can read. It wasn't clear to me exactly what the community, what the obligations of the community were. Again, I'm not opposed to this, I would just like more information before we vote. So this is another thing that we could put on the agenda for next time, and by then, maybe our veteran agent will have had the time to look into this, because again, this just came in on Thursday the 7th, I think, or something like that. So if we could get more information and invite Joe to come to the meeting as well?
Yeah, so Jim, if you can, Jim, if you can reach out to the gentleman and invite him, please. Okay. 39, review discuss posting for the Agriculture, Agriculture Commission in the Open Space and Recreation Committee, what we have here.
Okay, so this is the Open Space and Recreation Committee. We had discussed at our last meeting, actually, I think our last two meetings, putting out a posting for this. And Carolyn did a little research, and I did as well, on other communities and what we've done in the past. So we now have a posting for the Open Space and Recreation Committee that if we agree to, we could go ahead and post for that. Again, this is to work on, well, I'll just read it. Nine members needed for the duration of the open space plan update. Applicants should have an interest and commitment to open space preservation and protection and recreation. The committee is responsible for updating the town's open space and recreation plan, which is a requirement of the state and also used as a determining factor in awarding grants for land use projects such as open space purchases and recreation facility development and upgrades. So looking at it, the last, the open space and recreation plan that expired in March of 2020, the members were, one from the Historic District Commission, one from the Recreation Board, one from the Planning Board, one from the Water Commissioners, one representing the Board of Health, and one member for the Conservation Commission, and three citizen-at-large members. So that, it seemed that that OSRD is in pretty good shape, it just needs to be updated. And the committee that put it together did a good job putting it together back in 2012, 2013. So these plans are good for seven years. So this would be a good start.
So can I get a motion to post?
I move that we post the open space and for members of the Open Space and Recreation Committee as noted in the packet.
And agriculture too, or?
Agriculture is a different discussion.
Okay, okay. All those in favor on the open space?
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. So what's the agriculture one?
All right, the agriculture one is specified in the charter. It's a committee, a commission that is to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. It consists of five Townsend residents appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Not fewer than three members shall derive income from farming, forestry, or agricultural-based enterprises in Townsend, and the other two members shall be interested in farming. At the time of initial appointment, two members shall be appointed for a term of three years, two members for a term of two years, and one member for a term of one year. Thereafter, appointments will be three years. So right now, we don't have a commission. I know that there was one appointed many years ago, but it's no longer. So the posting that we have here is not, I don't think it's robust enough. So I'd like to go back and have it updated to fit the membership in the charter and brought back to us at the February 2nd meeting. And this was in the packet, there's an email stream. Someone had inquired about land, farmland in Townsend that they would like to lease or acquire to do farming on. So typically, this is something that would be referred to the Agriculture Commission, so.
Okay, all right, let's stick that up in our next meeting then.
All right, so this one goes to February 2nd.
Okay, yep. 310, evaluation tool regarding department heads.
All right, I was the one that requested this, and I requested this actually for the Town Administrator's evaluation, because by contract, we have to decide on a tool and a form for, for evaluating. So I guess, Wayne, my, my question is for you, are we doing this for all department heads then? Has this been expanded?
I'm not sure, Jim. Can you expand on that?
Sure, all I know is that the discussion has been specific to the Town Administrator position, but the form that's been used as the Town Administrator's form has been used throughout the organization for all department heads as well. So I think the, the posting was listed that way to leave the door open at the possibility that it would be, as it is now, across the board for all managers.
Okay.
Okay, I see. All right. Sorry, a lot of paper here. And I have a question then, on the tool that you, so what I did is, I provided in the packet, for the packet, from the MMA, and this is something that was sent to us in September by Carolyn. And it, it actually uses what I like for setting, for goal setting, which is the SMART goals, and that is apparently recommended by the MMA. So I guess if I were going to be the sole person doing this, my recommendation would be to take the way of setting goals and objectives that's described in this, it's actually a PowerPoint, you know, establishing performance goals, decide on the types of goals to be established, either project or program focused, or task oriented, set SMART goals for each of those, and then it gives steps in evaluating performance. So that what got put in the packet, Wayne, got cut off because it was, it was entered into the scanner in portrait, but it was landscape, if that makes any sense.
Yes.
So, so it got cut off on the right-hand side. I can forward to you what it was to look at, but essentially, it's using SMART goals, which I'm pretty sure you're familiar with, correct?
Oh, yeah. I'm very familiar.
My recommendation is to take each of these performance evaluation criterias, and we can use this for any department supervisor, including the Town Administrator. And so the categories are legislative relations, public relations, communications, budget preparation and administration, managerial skills, direct supervision of town organizations, personal and professional growth, and productivity and reliability, job knowledge and initiative. Then it says goals and objectives, but in any event, I think that's a rating thing down at the bottom. So I would take each of these, and under each of them, there are bullet points there, I would put the SMART goals there, the things that are, you know, attainable, measurable, specific. I would, when meeting with each person that this is going to be, you know, you're doing the evaluation on, determine those goals. They should be measurable. And then we can go with the rating, you know, the rating scale that's there, but did they or did they not meet it? And how well, you know, was it satisfactory, unsatisfactory, meets below, exceeds? We can look at those ratings and see what we think of that.
Okay, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
All right, so then I would move that for, and Jim, I think by contract, you have to agree to this.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, Veronica, is, I see the PowerPoint, but I don't see an actual evaluation tool on here.
I would use the tool that you gave us. In other words, I would take the rating scale. You sent us something that had been used in the past.
Right.
And it has a rating scale of one to five. But I don't want to do that one to five by, provides meeting information when requested. No, I want, provides the agenda for every staff meeting, and follows on, you know, provides the minutes following every staff meeting, because those you can count, you know, well, did you or didn't you, who knows? Quality of response to various boards' needs and concerns. I would never evaluate somebody on quality, because what I see as quality might be entirely different from what someone else sees as quality. So I would want something that's measurable there. And so the SMART goals in what you gave, in what I gave you, and this is from a, there's a whole PowerPoint presentation to go with that PPT that's on the MMA website. So in there, that, it's the setting of the goals. The performance evaluation system, I don't know, that might be something that we need to purchase, but in any event, I'm not into doing that. I think we can do it without. But if you look at, I think it's slide six, maybe, I'm not sure. Performance evaluation tool components, general data, performance competency, pre-established and defined criteria that is applicable to the position being evaluated, a rating system does not meet expectations, to achieves expectations, to exceeds expectations, and include an employee's self-evaluation. I would want to adopt that. And then comments, there should always be comments, I think. Goals and scoring, establish SMART goals, performance and professional development, and include a mechanism to determine overall performance. So I would want to, for each employee individually, because it's all different, have SMART goals under these categories, if these are the categories that people are used to being evaluated on. But it should be measurable. I don't want to, I personally would not want to evaluate somebody on the quality of something.
So, so what it makes...
Creativity, I mean, if it weren't a goal, what does creativity mean? What I think is creative might be completely different to someone else. Does that make sense?
Is it, you wish then that I take the existing form and bake in the types of evaluative criteria listed on page six, as opposed to what's been traditionally used? I just want to try to find where your, where your head is in terms of an actual document that I sit with department managers with and that you sit with me with.
I'm not ready to answer that question yet, Jim, but we do need to establish your goals.
Indeed.
And I'd like to do that at the next meeting. So I guess what I would want to do, we could have a work session on this, if we're, I didn't realize we were extending it to all of the employees. And if we are, I'm good with that, but we should have a work session to determine what it is we give the employees, we should get their buy-in on this, and that's what we should do. So I would do it a little bit more in-depth for that, I think.
All right, let's, let's discuss further.
Do I mean?
Work session is the next step then?
Work session for evaluating employee performance, to get that all on board, and I, I think we might want to open it to a wider discussion. And I think for you, Jim, it's SMART goals to be established at our next meeting, February 2nd, so that you have an entire year to work towards them. I don't know the evaluation timeframe for the employees. I mean, is it annual? Is it based on when they, on when the employee was hired? Is it done on a fiscal year basis? I don't know that. I just don't know.
We can get that all done in one fell swoop as we make these changes, so everything is consistent. So I know in some places, some departments where there's an elected board, an evaluation cycle has been different than in other departments, so if we can get it unified, that'd be perfect.
So I think we should have a work session to talk about this. And in the meantime, Jim, I think, and Wayne, you, you can weigh in on this too. I don't know what you're thinking, but I would take each of these, you know, six categories and blank out the bullets, well, we could use them somehow, but put in what we think goes under there. Under some of these, we might have three goals, under others, we might have one. So that's what I...
Yeah, yeah, well, let's, let's talk about it further.
Wait, 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 what do you mean?
I mean, a work session.
For the employees, but I want to talk about it now for Jim, for the...
Can we since that's not what's on the agenda?
Well, what I asked to be on the agenda was the Town Administrators. I didn't ask for the, all the employees. I didn't know we were doing a, until I saw the agenda, and so I assumed that you had changed it to an evaluation tool for department heads.
I did not change anything there, so.
Nor did I. It's, it's, I think the assumption was made by Carolyn that the tool has been used across the board, so that's the way she put it. But I think you're fair to talk about it tonight, because...
Well, I, I mean, I think we all, I think we, as you just discussed, I mean, we want to set your goals for the next meeting, so let's get them established first, then we can build the tools from that. If that makes sense.
Whatever your pleasure.
Okay, with you, Veronica?
Yeah, so what are we doing? Give me, give me the breakdown on what we're doing here for department heads. For department heads, it's a work session for...
I think, I think both it's department heads and for, for Town Administrator. I want them to be consistent and match each other.
Well, that would be... Well, that would be nice, except that job descriptions from the Collins Center don't include the town administrator. The town administrator's job description is not defined in the same way.
I understand that, but I mean, everybody should have evaluations. That's, I think we can both agree upon that. But it's got to start top down because my boss, it's like my, my job. My boss has his goals that get funneled down to me, then get funneled down to their employees. So it's, it's a trickle down. So you got to start with the top first and then work with the department heads. And because if there's goals for, say, highway department, they're specific to Jim, that get rolled down to, to the supervisor, then that's something that we have to look at, so.
Okay, so the purpose of the work session is?
To establish that flow and set goals and trickle down goals from there.
And so in that work session, will we be setting goals for the town administrator?
I would say so.
Okay, and then we'll be establishing the tool.
At, at the same time, I mean, it's got, they have.
In that process.
Yeah.
So dates for work session within the next two weeks prior to our next.
I'll have to review my schedule.
Things are getting tight. Two weeks is a lot going on. All right, all right.
All right, 311 discussion, health, health insurance joint purchase agreement.
Mr. Chairman, this has been kept on as a placeholder on the off chance that we had had the opportunity to meet with the IAC, the Insurance Advisory Committee. Bobby Jones is on the call from ASME, he was, I don't know that he still is, was on the call for a little bit. He did get me the names of the Insurance Advisory Committee representatives for each union group, ASME, at the tail end of last week. And outreach was made to them. And we have a tentative Zoom discussion on IAC tomorrow at 10:00 AM. And that'll be a conversation that'll be very much like the conversation that we had with the group just last week, just talking about the mechanics of a joint purchase agreement, what it means in terms of the benefit level, any rights that the union employees have to negotiate over terms and conditions of benefits remain irrespective of the mechanism used to pay, whether we stay as a, a single governmental unit or join a joint purchase agreement. None of their rights are changed. So there's, there's no update other than that, and we do have that discussion planned for tomorrow at 10:00.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question? My understanding was that we had to sign that document by the end of January, or it was not valid for this year. So I guess my question is, are we looking at this for next year, not for this year? Because we started this at the beginning of December.
We did indeed. The conversation that I had with Mr. Pecos, who was the consultant last week, was that we are late, but that if we are able to get something together within the next couple of weeks, it makes best sense for all communities that are considering it to have the purchase power of three towns instead of just two. So they're holding the door open on the chance that we're still in with no guarantee.
And is this Mr. Pecos or whatever who presented at our meeting way back when? Is he the person that would go out for bid for Townsend alone?
Yes, they, they go out to bid for us and they have as a sole municipal entity, and they would for the JPA if in fact it is put together. Either way, they are the consultant that represents the town for health insurance.
I just have a concern about timing on this. I'm, I'm wondering if we should wait until next year.
Well, the possibility, going back to Mr. Pecos' presentation, the possibility of savings that could be realized, as he said, no guarantee, but until you open the bids, you don't know. But the possibility of the savings realized by a joint purchase or something that if we can get that information to consider, I think we have an obligation to do so because, as you know, budget is tight today and looks to be tighter tomorrow. You know, we've had some discussion about the very simple broad brushstrokes of the fact that we can raise a little over a half a million dollars a year. And the ask for the regional school district alone is more than that. So if we're looking at an increase in health insurance, that's going to be a significant impact on a million dollar line item. So to the extent that we can get a better bang for the buck by being in a group, I think we should be pursuing it.
How long can we wait?
He would prefer that we be done already. I told him what my schedule is, that I have IAC scheduled for a discussion on Wednesday, and that I would need to bring it back to you. The one proviso that you as a board have given to me is that you wanted to hear from the employees first. We've been trying to schedule that for the better part of the month now. We now have that scheduled. Once I have that meeting tomorrow, I'll be able to tell you what I heard from the employees, and you can make a decision as a board at your next meeting in two weeks or sooner, if you hold one, as to what your pleasure is.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, I'm a margos then. All right, 312 discussion COVID testing and vaccine distribution, is the fire chief still on?
There I am.
Okay, I know I've talked to you about a little bit about this, but if you want to just fill in for Veronica's sake and the public's sake, what we're looking for here?
So it's pretty simple. It's in-house testing for COVID. We would hire a third-party company to facilitate that and train our paramedics to be able to do it in-house, which is pretty simple. It's a nasal swab and either at our request or on a weekly basis, they would pick them up in a drop box, secured drop box at the fire station and give us the test results within 12 to 24 hours, I believe it is. The importance for emergency services only, for fire and, and police. And it would expedite us getting our hands around any kind of exposure we might have here in town.
So this, this is a substitute of having to go to Malden or some place, wherever they're doing a mass test?
Exactly. Instead of sitting, you know, wherever you go, whether it's Carewell in Pittsburgh or Malden and sitting in the parking lot for four hours or more to get tested, you simply call our people and swab them ourselves and help them to come pick them up. The cost is $60 per test and there's no setup fees or administrative fees.
That's great. So Jim, do we need to do anything with this, or is this?
There is a contract that has been reviewed by Adam. Came back at, at the last hour, just before your last meeting. So the comment was that you weren't ready to take it up, but you wanted to have some time to, to look through it. So here we are, you've had it now for two weeks. So if it's your pleasure to move forward with it and execute, then a vote would be in order.
Can I get a motion, Veronica?
I move that we. What are the words on this? We signed the contract with, what was the name of the company? With Pro EMS Solution to provide the testing services as defined in the contract.
And sign out of session.
And sign it out of session.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I had one question for Chief Boynton. I was wondering if, you know, I understand that this contract is only for emergency services personnel, but I was wondering if it would be possible to extend it for our senior center staff, for example, or any of the town employees who might, you know, think that they were exposed at work? If something were to happen, like Chris Nocella wants us to shut down, the Board of Health wants us to shut down all of Town Hall. But if something were to happen that would probably cause us to do that, would the employees be able to get tested under this? Is there some sort of rider or letter that we could add so that our, our EMTs here in town could perform that testing for the staff?
I've discussed this with area fire chiefs and with Chief Sartell. My recommendation is no, simply because we open a can of worms with HIPAA as far as us maintaining confidentiality, who's getting tested, and why they're getting. My preference would be to keep it to emergency services only because we're already inside that bubble, so to speak, of HIPAA, where we're already expected, you know, already maintaining a certain amount of, or a certain level of confidentiality. And I think it gets really complicated when we start testing outside of those two agencies.
So, okay, this is probably a question that's beyond the scope of this meeting. But I guess my question is, why? So we don't maintain privacy for the regular employees in town? Or is there a HIPAA paperwork that you and Chief Sartell have to fill out for that sort of confidentiality? I just don't know, I'm just curious.
There's no paperwork, it's, it's just a matter of us having the staff to. Senior.
What? You having staff to, I'm sorry, it's breaking up.
It's a matter of us having the staff to facilitate testing and all the paperwork and confidentiality that goes along with it. There's no specific HIPAA paperwork, but it becomes a lot more complicated than we're not when we're testing outside of our own agency.
Any other questions, Veronica?
No, that's it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. And you said this is a vaccine distribution too, Chief?
No, I'm not sure how that got on the agenda.
Okay.
We don't have any control over the vaccination.
I didn't think so, so.
Just for the record, all, I believe, except for one of our personnel have gotten vaccinated and that person is scheduled to go on Wednesday.
Awesome, and I know the fire chief, the police department was doing the same, so. Good, glad you guys got it. Thank you. All right, 41, town administrator updates and reports, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, on the topic of, I'm just pulling up the document here, hold on. FY22 budget update, no new word coming out on fiscal '22 on the state level. The unofficial word is, again, best expectation is going to be level funding. I recommend that we work with a revenue number slightly less than level funding, just to be certain that we're not going to be running into some jeopardy. So in the most recent iteration of the model, I've got a 5% reduction in state local aid built into the pro forma. Budget message, I'm looking at the screen here. As been the case in the last several years, we are very well aware this past budget year has been a very difficult one. The impacts of COVID-19 on the timing and substance of our budgeting has been unprecedented. All indications are that fiscal '22 is going to be at least as difficult. We are expecting a very limited projected increase in available real estate tax revenues against a significant increase in the request currently being made by North Middlesex Regional School District that absorbs nearly all of it. All of this should be factored against what we were advised may be at best level funding, but likely could be cuts in state aid to cities and towns. Accordingly, we should be prepared to institute cuts to our operating budgets. This is not intended to be an exercise, it's expected to be a reality. Operating budget, I recognize the flat percentage cuts across the board are not going to be an effective way or even a fair or appropriate way to get us to the point that we need to be, and that we may well be looking at wholesale changes in the manner in which we provide public service. Requesting an operating budget that contains a bottom line that is at most level funded at this year's appropriation. Additionally, given that you are the subject matter experts for your departments, further request that you explain where you would recommend cuts to your departmental budget by line item and in an order that you would suggest, given your knowledge of your department's inner workings. You should further state that the expected impact, excuse me, you should further state what the expected impact would be with each of the cuts so proposed. This to be done line by line in your budget, listing the order of priority weighted from first to be cut to the last. You should do this work in narrative form, using the form attached at the end of this memo. And the example as follows, example would be department, and this is just going alphabetically. Animal Control, first cut proposed, line number, you fill in the line number. I propose cutting the position of ACO to halftime. Obviously, this is us because we don't have a full-time ACO officer. Fewer funded hours equal fewer hours with coverage. This is the impact. And residents will experience a decreased level of response time and will feel the impact directly. Suggestion, review the regionalization options with neighboring towns. So that would be the, the format that would be used for the recommendations for cuts in budget. I fully expect this to again be a terribly difficult process and one that will require a great deal of your time and your utmost strength and attention. The bottom line is that you know your department better than I, and your strategic and directed cuts will serve everyone better than with my presumed best cuts. Additionally, I encourage everyone from department head through every employee to offer their thoughts and suggestions on manners in which we can either increase revenue and or reduce expense with the least impact on the delivery of services to the public. These suggestions may be sent in through department heads directly to me, either in the office, by email, or under the door, and either signed or dropped anonymously. Things are predicted to be so tight that everything should be considered. Finally, it should be known that a consensus budget is the goal, that the final decision rests with the Board of Selectmen. Please prepare accordingly. We'll be scheduling individual department meetings shortly. Conclusion, if you have any questions or if you require any special assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me, phone number listed. Thank you for efforts in this matter and look forward to working with you once again on this year's budget. And there is a plug deadline for submission of the budgets, honorary for February 5th, 2022, which is.
More to come.
Yes, I have talked with, for instance, Chief Sartell, who's on the call today. He asked if, if it's as specific as that, that every line item from paperclips to fuel, he's required to make the assessment that this would be the 87th weighted cut that he would make. And for departments that are, that are the big three, generally speaking, police, fire, and highway, they can do it in groupings, so they can do it in staff. For instance, when Jay and I talked, it was, if we reduce staffing, this one line within staffing is likely to go up, it's called overtime. And if it doesn't go up, that's going to mean that we're going to have a reduction in service by having to reduce the number of shifts that we cover. So that general sense of, of cut and impact on the larger budgets is the expectation. And it may lead to requests for further refinement, but for the first, first pass through, it would be at that level of detail.
Next.
Well, I, I have things to say, and it goes with the next thing, I guess, the vacant positions as well. I, I guess on the budget, I have a concern about timeline. I, I assume that we are still going with our annual town meeting being the first week in May, is that correct?
Well, that wouldn't be my decision, it would be yours. All I can say is that I normally would have put this budget memo out in December. I had asked to do so, and the board had respectfully requested that I hold off. And just at the last meeting, you gave me your approval to put it out. So we are behind undoubtedly. But if it's a, if it's a, you look surprised by that.
I, I am, I didn't know that we had requested that, I'll have to review that. But I, I thought that we were going forward with FY22. We didn't have an FY21 budget approved by the state until December 17. We met on the 15th and the 22nd, but we didn't take up anything on the 22nd, so. In any event.
I encourage you to go back and look at that.
By charter, we need to have annual town meeting at the beginning of May, I believe. And so I, I have a concern. I guess I, I'd like to see things move along so that if timelines are to February 5th and you're meeting with every department, that it, it means that by, we should have budget, March is going to be really busy.
It usually is, yeah, it usually is.
And, and we have a budget policy. But in any event, I understand that this year has been unusual. But looking at FY22, it would be good to get us back on track. So I guess my question is, is capital planning meeting yet?
I have had discussion with a member of capital planning. I have had discussion with a member of capital planning about, my screen just jumped on me. About getting them on track, so I do know that they are preparing to, to move forward. I'm going to be speaking with that member within the next couple of days here about trying to get a meeting established, which I would attend. And take the lead in providing administrative support this year.
So I guess from a planning point perspective for the Board of Selectmen, we should expect that we are having, in addition to our regular meetings in March, work sessions on a weekly basis with the Finance Committee?
That was the plan.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, that's really for you. You as a board to determine how you want to go forward. I mean, last year, obviously, was, was an unusual by 100 years. The year before, we met Saturdays throughout the month of March jointly with the Finance Committee, so whatever, whatever your pleasure.
Well, we're really good at virtual meetings now, so I think we could, I think we have to do that if we're.
I know, and that was my plan all along, to do that again.
Oh, it was? Okay.
Yes. I mean, I wanted to do it this year, we just couldn't. So it worked, it worked really well the last time we did it, so I'd like to keep that going.
So we should plan for work sessions every week in March with the Finance Committee to get the budgets.
At least until it's done, yeah. Every week can get it done in two.
Just to be clear, I can't speak to the Finance Committee, obviously they're, you know, the invitation for joint meetings will go out. Their attendance is determined by their interest and if they choose to, to attend, that's great, and I think that they will. But I just want to be clear that we, we don't have any authority to compel, that's all.
It's not a requirement under the budget policy?
They are separate and independent body from the Board of Selectmen, so you don't have the ability to compel them. I have no reason to believe they won't attend joint meetings, I just be clear in saying that.
I, I guess I will be clear in saying, I, I expect that at town meeting in May, we will have recommendations from the Finance Committee on all the budget items that require a recommendation one way or the other. That's what I would like to see, and so I would like us to make an effort to get there.
I don't expect that you won't, I think that you will. I just wanted to be clear because it sounded like we were creating something and mandating that they meet attendance. And I was just making the point that that's, it's not within the select board's purview, that's all.
So what is within the Finance Committee purview? I mean, don't they have a requirement themselves?
They do. The point I'm making Veronica is, you are not superior to them in the table of organization, that's all. It was just that you can't compel them to be there, that's all.
Okay, all right, got it. We'll move on.
Okay.
All right, so timeline, vacant positions, I would, I guess I, I think that that needs to be looked at as well. I think that there are vacant positions that we've lived without for the year that perhaps we can live without for next year, and vacant positions that we've lived for out, without for the year that would be really nice to have funded. So I think we need to look at that as well.
And it would be important for the board to give me that direction, so I know in my calculus, as I'm trying to make everything line up, that you have an expectation that some slot that might not have a figure in it today should have one in it tomorrow. So the sooner you can, as a board, give me that direction, the better.
Okay, so I move that vacant positions that were funded, that have not been filled, and I won't go across the board on this, be zeroed. You know, positions that, I guess I would prefer to keep the people that we have employed, all the people, and people that, you know, there were positions that were funded that are vacant right now. There are, I would, so I would like to see an adjustment based on that. There are positions that we zeroed last year, specifically the land use coordinator and the grant writer. I would like to see that position reworked, so that it is a single position. A land use coordinator together with a grant writer, and that it does get funded at what is, whatever is reasonable. So that's what I would like to see.
And we can take that up as we go through the budget process, so.
Well, I guess Jim needs direction, and if there is a motion then, I would like to, because.
Do you need a motion for that, Jim?
Well, Veronica made it in a form of a motion, so I think her point is, if she's made it as a motion, it should be disposed of as a motion.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Do you have the wording for my motion, Jim?
I do, I have all vacant positions that are currently funded but not filled would be zeroed out with the exception of land use and grant, which would be reworked as one position, paid what is appropriate.
Okay, so the one change I would make is that land use and the grant writer are zeroed right now.
Yep.
They would be reinstated.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'll resecond, and all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Okay, next, DCR purchase?
This was the, the purchase up on Route 13, and I just responded, I got an email that I saw.
I saw that, yeah.
Around 5:30, 5:30, from Christine Berry, and we never got back to her after that last meeting.
I haven't been able to locate, the outstanding issue that we had was being able to determine who actually is in a position to make the decision. Because we have people that are listed that aren't actually, refresh my recollection Veronica, that people that are listed, but they're not the ones that have been paying. So there was a question about who actually has the ability to, to, to do the deal.
No one has been paying, and the person that is listed as the owner is not the actual owner.
Right.
The owner is a trust, and the person that's listed as owning it is no longer, for the past like 20 years or some such thing, not a principal in that trust. Therefore, we need to find the two people who are principals in that trust. And see if we can figure out how to, how to, well, just to talk with them, to see what their desire is with the property that they haven't been paying taxes on, because that property is in tax title right now. And you pointed out that that could be really long.
And I did see, I did see the email just late this afternoon, early this evening, before the meeting that came in that you responded to. And so now I do have the direct contact information. So I'm going to reach out with Adam and see if he can suggest a better way of tracking down the members of the trust because I'm, I'm not having much luck in any of the things that I've been doing on Mass Land Records and through the Secretary of State's office. So at your next meeting, whether it's two weeks out, or if you have one sooner, I can have an update after having worked with Adam on it.
And you'll also reach out to Christine Berry?
I will let Christine know, absolutely.
So let her know where we are on that.
Yep.
Is that it, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 4-2, Board of Selectmen Announcements, Updates and Reports. Before we get to yours Veronica, I just reiterate that we have an election Saturday to remind everybody, so. Kind of important, so make sure you get out and vote. And 4-2-1, your grant update?
I guess, what are we at, announcements, updates and reports? Okay, so let me start with the grants. We, after the grant meetings that we had, I guess it's been almost two weeks ago, and then the follow-on meetings last week. And you all have these. We decided that we would go forward with the Winter Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. And in the abstract, it would be for signage for parks that are accessible from the common and the Townsend downtown area. We would add bike lanes where we could, bike racks and parking, and crosswalks. So there was a things to do list that went with this, and I'm not going to itemize that here. But we were going to target the February 26th deadline, as opposed to the January 29th. And, and focus on the Reimagine Streets category.
Okay.
So if the board so desires, we will go forward with that, and I will schedule follow-on meetings with this group. Jim, you were at those meetings, so you, Beth and Adria. Adria said she would be happy to do the schematics, and there were little assignments in the thing that I sent after the follow-on meeting. So everybody that has that, I think pictures, and there were things we needed to look at, so. The second page, we only got the first page on this in the packet, it looks like.
I got both.
But the first abstract was the two pager, and so you don't have the second page on that, Wayne, I don't, right here. I can hunt it up out of my folder, but. Anyway, if you have further questions on that, Wayne, you know, let me know.
Sure.
And I will.
I think it's great, so that's fantastic, keep going.
So this one, we're going to try to get in during, in February, and I know, Jim, you're working on the budget process at the same time. So, you know, we need to, I guess, I guess there's, we'll find the time to get this done. So Wild and Scenic is the next one. So, and I think what we can do is vote, do we want to vote on each of these? Or do we want to just say, we'll, we'll do a vote at the end?
I think if we need a vote to keep going forward, I don't see an issue with either one, I think they're both great, so.
With the Winter Shared Streets and Spaces, that's going to require a Board of Selectmen sign off. That's.
Okay.
That I believe is submitted through the Board of Selectmen Office.
Okay, well, we're not, we're not ready to sign yet, are we?
No.
Okay, so, yeah, I just, I just keep moving forward then, and we'll, we'll take it up as, when it's required.
All right, the Wild and Scenic Stewardship Grant, we're going to, we're planning to move forward on this one as well. The application deadline is April 1st, but you can submit anytime from February 1st to April 1st. So we will submit this one as soon as we can. The good news is, the, the first one goes in at the end of February, so we'll look at March to be getting, you know, working on it in February. But the March, April, you know, March timeframe to get this in, it's due April 1st. So we have a little bit of time. For this one, we were going to focus on the restoration of the Adams Dam area. So the, put a gate at the dam to prevent further erosion from vehicles getting in there from either the feed store area or the other side, the Jeff Street. Guard rail or something similar to prevent a vehicle from going over the banking in the parking area. And then rebuild or eliminate, I'm not sure which, the steps that go down to the water by the trestle and install some type of erosion control. And on this one, we already have a lot of photos, but more keep coming in on this grant. We're going to, the stewardship plan, Bill Catigan looked at that. And although the Adams Dam is in there as the replacement of the dam itself, there are, I think it's the last page, Bill, that you sent, the, the trail work. We can fit this under that category for the grant. So, and we will continue to look, Emmy's been very helpful with this. Continue to look for other grants that could possibly help with the other things that we have in mind for the Adams Dam area. So these abstracts, I could put them somewhere for the public to see, I suppose. Or they could just be in the minutes, I don't know which. But in any event, this grant is a $5,000 maximum. So Roger Raposa is, from Parks and Cemeteries, is looking at how much each of those first things requires from a funding perspective. This grant pays you out 2,500 initially, and then the town would have to cover the other 25, but it would come back to us after. So they give you 2,500 when they grant the award half, basically, of what you need. So if the max is 5,000, that's where I got that 2,500. And then we, the town, would need to pay for the rest, and then it would be reimbursed.
Okay.
So that's Wild and Scenic on the tip, which is not in the packet, but I sent both the tip and the Mass Trails along for the tip. Beth and I are going to meet with MRPC. We would like to, the, the group that met for the follow-on grant thought that we would look at the area by the high school, including the Proctor Road intersection. And one idea is to have a pedestrian walkway somewhere in that area so that people from the high school and the preschool can go over 119 safely to access Harbor Village and the rail trail on that side. So that's something that we're going to look at. So Beth and I, the tip is a long process, you have to get on the Mass Dot project, you need a project number. And it's a process, a many-year process. The other thing that we talked about was the lights at Sterlite, and I asked Jim about that.
Yeah, I can, I can fill you in on that. The Stones who own Sterlite were adamant about paying for it themselves, they, they, they're supposed to be moving forward with it. It's their project now, they, they are supposed to be funded, and I know for a fact from my friends that worked there that it's all marked out and where they plan to do it, it's just a matter of getting the stuff up in and installed.
So does the town need to provide any support to them?
I did, I arranged last year, December, I believe it was, a meeting with the gentleman from the Mass DOT and the representatives from Sterlite. We met twice to go over what was needed and all they did, all the state was requiring was basically a site plan. And they, they'd proven, provide the permit for, for Sterlite to do the work. To my knowledge, it's been done, it's just a matter of getting it done.
Can we check in on that to see where the status is?
I, I have asked the General Manager of Sterlite to see where we're at, and I haven't heard back from him yet.
So you can get a report maybe for a meeting in February?
Yes, I mean, I know him personally, so I can, it'll be easy for me to reach out to him.
Because otherwise, that's one that we would talk to Brad Harris at MRPC and.
Yeah, this, this was the fastest way to get, as you just said, this could be a two-year process. The whole idea was to get this done as quickly as possible, having a private entity, just with permission of the state to do it, it obviously is faster, so.
Okay, so we need status on that then.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get you an update next time.
All right, and the other one we talked about was Mass Trails, and that's a very short timeline, that was a February 1st deadline. And we have opted not to go forward with this grant cycle, but to look at the next grant cycle. And in that process, get the Open Space and Recreation Plan up to date. See if we can't work on getting a stewardship committee together for town trails and lands to get that started. And to look at what is, what, what is possible, what people want done in town. So there will be a doodle poll coming out, and we'll take the time that we need to get things in place. For typically, this grant is due in at, I believe it's around November 1st. And because of the funding in the state this year, it got pushed out to February 1st. So it's possible that there will be another round coming up in November. So we're targeting the next round of the grant. And that would be for maintenance of town trails is one possibility, like old Meeting House Park. And there's some other ideas on that, maintenance of Howard Park, trail maps, kiosks, those sorts of things, so.
Thank you for the chairman, to, to you, to Veronica, I did reach out to Grotton after our last meeting and did have communication with their highway superintendent about the contract that they used, the funds they used to do their, their lighting, their flashing lights, pasture lights. Curb cuts and the pedestrian work. So he gave me all that information, and he's forwarding a copy of the scope of work that they used, so I do have the contact for who they used. It was done through the Complete Streets program. He said that they too, in the section that they did half of that job, are in state layout and that the state did not balk at them doing it as a part of the bigger project. They, similar to what Wayne just said regarding the Sterlite light. they just want to see a site plan done in advance. And if it's going to be done on their layout, as long as their site plan is viewed first, they'd be fine with it. That's what happened in Groton. So I do have that information.
Okay. So we should look at that because for the shared streets and spaces, we want that light by Apple Meadow.
Correct.
Coming down Jeff Street and going across. So what I'll do is I'll schedule follow-on meetings for Winter Shared Streets and Spaces and for the Wild and Scenic Stewardship. Beth and I will get together and meet with Brad Harris at MRPC. The tip is a long process. And Townsend is not, I think we looked at at least 10 years. And there are no projects for Townsend going forward for the tip. The closest one is a traffic circle at Route 31. Like, if you go out Wheeler Road and hit Route 31 in Ashby, a traffic circle is planned to go in there. And I can't remember the timeframe. But that is the closest thing to Townsend that's on that list. So, and we will continue forward with Mass Trails. So I'll be working with the people in that group to schedule a meeting for that. But the first two will be Winter Shared Streets and Wild and Scenic. We'll concentrate on that for February and March.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right.
One other thing, Wayne. I wanted to vote, since this is our last week and we're both here. I wanted to, I'll do it as a motion. I move that we go back to having two signatures to sign on the warrant.
Yeah. And I'll second that, because we'll have a third member Saturday. So all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. I didn't have anything else there either. So reports on boards and liaisons, I have none that haven't been covered already. So.
I don't think I do either this time around.
All right. Last one, 4-4, review and sign payroll, bills and warrants out of session. Get a motion.
I move that we review and sign payroll and those payable warrants out of session.
Second. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. All right. We have two executive sessions. Do you want to give a motion for those, please?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, before you do, I did get a message from Chief Sartell, who is still on the call. He raised a concern or a question about the discussion about any position that is currently funded but not filled being zeroed out, specifically because he has two positions, a sergeant's position that is funded but not filled and the lieutenant position funded and not filled. That he has nearly completed the recruitment, which is a long-term process for both. And he wanted to make certain that he's not going to be running afoul of that position of the board. Those are two crucial positions in his operations. So he is here.
Yeah. And I'd just like to add to that, just a patrolman's position as well. Technically, if I follow that to the letter of the law, they are funded and not filled because we've had vacancies or what have you. And again, we're at the end of a four- or five-month process to fill all those positions that you had just mentioned. Just want a clarity that these are not part of that initial zero-out discussion.
Well, I will say that they were part of that initial zero-out discussion. So if you could send over where you stand in the process with all of those?
Literally, it's literally an everyday thing. You know, we are sending the candidates to appointments on a regular basis. Candidate today, in fact, is scheduled for an appointment on Friday. Psychological appointments are open. So we've got two vacancies that need to get filled one way or the other, even not tied to positions. But, yeah. So this process has been ongoing. I think we started it in July or August. September, I think, was our first testing date. And it's gone all the way through to now. So two open spots, one of them a command position. If we go internally, then certainly they would be an open position for, at the patrol level. If we go externally, it gets filled that way. So we do have that. We also are in the middle of a promotional process, as Mr. Crowder had alluded to. That is in its final stages as well. We have a board scheduled for the end of the month. These things, actually, I think a week from Friday or something. So they're all very fluid. They're happening on a daily basis. We're doing something to it. This would be a pretty radical thing for me to abandon. And to get kicked back up and started would literally be a six-to-eight-month process. The process I'm in now for the patrolman, just for instance, we're shooting for a March or April Academy date. If I miss those, then we're talking fall. So if you gave me a position today, it takes me about 10 months to get that person on the road working calls by themselves. So we've got that lag built in. And we're dealing with departures that happened six, eight, sometimes 10 months ago.
So I guess we should talk about this then. Where do we stand with the lieutenant position?
So we've been through the process. I have a finalist coming in to meet with me tomorrow. It's also very fluid because I am in the process of negotiations. It's a bit rugged to talk about in this environment. But it is, I have identified a candidate. We're candidates. And we are beginning the process of negotiation in that. The testing is done. The interviews are done. It's just in its final stages.
Okay. So I didn't know that. I didn't think anything had moved because I hadn't heard anything one way or the other.
Personally, I think we should allow the chief to go forward with the process with the understanding that there may be changes in the budget coming up in the next couple of months that we have to make some disastrous hard decisions about.
I'll go with that.
Okay. Does that satisfy you, chief?
Sure. Thank you very much for the support. And again, if either one of you in the prospective selectmen on Saturday's election want to know more about, more minutia, more detail about it, I'd be happy to send staffing tables and kind of explain it in much more depth. And certainly during budgeting season, we will get into it at a much deeper level. I do appreciate the support. And again, the lag makes this extremely difficult to deal with because, again, it does take a long time to get a candidate identified. And that could all get pulled away at the last second if you have background issues. I mean, there are a lot of moving parts. Again, we're talking about a four- or five-month process up to get me to where we are now. So I do appreciate that. And I'll do my best to keep you in.
Okay. Thanks, chief. All right. Back to executive sessions. Can I get motions, Veronica, please?
Are we going to be returning to open or not?
No.
Nope.
Right. I move that we enter executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints. And also, so.
I'll take them separately. So second, all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
And following that, I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares regarding all unions.
And I'll second that. And I do declare, all those in favor?
And we will not be returning to executive session after, or to open session after either executive session.
And I'll second the amendment. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. So a quick break, Jim?